We're going to reconvene our meeting to open session. The board has been in executive session since 6:05 to discuss tenure recommendations, VCUEA, contract issue, transportation personnel matter. We could stand in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on its nation under God, in his soul, with liberty and justice for all.
We could do introductions.
Dave Hurst, Chris Meyer.
Christine Beck.
Willow Bear.
Jody Monroe.
Holly Delenvall.
Meredith Mariari.
Wendy Sampson.
And Judy Pinto.
And Jonathan Fishbein.
First on the agenda is approval of minutes. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the September 16th, 2020 regular board meeting. So, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions that carries? Next up is our superintendent's report.
Sure. So actually, a little over a week ago, it was a week later than because of the weather, we held our third annual Wear Blue Day, which was to kick off Anti-Bullying Month. This is the program that was begun by sponsor, It's For Hate. If you recall, last year, we also included a community walk, which fortunately, we're not able to do, but hope to do in the future. I'd also like to congratulate Sean Mates, who for the second time in two years, he's advanced to the finals of the National Braille Challenge, and we wish him the best of the finals. This week, we also began our fourth week of in-person learning, as well as some students being remote. All things are going well in our buildings. We worked out many challenges. We still have some work to do on arrival and dismissal. I've had the opportunity to begin visiting classrooms, and I want to thank our students for cooperating with our reopening plans and want to commend our teachers for their creative ideas with their lessons, given the parameters they need to work within. And also, I'd like to thank our parents for their continued support as we reopen. And finally, I'd like to turn it over to Judy to talk about some transportation issues, just to make everyone aware of some concerns with driver shortages.
So not unique to Bethlehem, everybody in the region, I think even nationally, is dealing with driver shortages, finding those who are able to get through the road tests, the licensing, the drug test, there's a whole lot that's involved to become a bus driver. When we created our budget for this school year, we had 87 drivers that we were expecting to need. Fortunately, with the modifications to the routes, with our families who are helping us by having their students walk or bike to school, or for parents who are driving them, we were able to lower the number of routes that we actually needed down to 75. That was very positive, because we actually, through a series of retirements and or resignations, dropped down to only 75 drivers. We do have some subs, but in a pool of drivers that size, inevitably, you're going to have absences, either long-term medical leaves or temporary needs to be out of work. So we have made it work by tapping into a very short list of available subs. And if we get into a really difficult situation, we end up sending mechanics out, who also have their CDLs, or our dispatching staff will go out. So I was working with transportation and our consultants, Transpar, to try to come up with some solutions to address that. And what we have come up with is what I'm affectionately calling the Slice and Dice Plan. So right now, we have a two-tier system, where we have high school students who are picked up first, and then you have elementary students who are picked up on the second leg. Or you have middle school students picked up first, and that is also coupled with an elementary route. So based on an analysis of that ridership, the numbers are really down on quite a few of those routes. So what we did was we identified routes that we could eliminate one piece of that combined leg, to therefore free up that driver to help out on other runs where we had drivers who were out. So we've identified five of the first leg runs between the middle school and the high school, and five runs for the elementary runs. So that practical impact means that we will notify families that their routes are being modified for each of those five runs, so those students will be just combined with another existing run. We still will be well below the 30 children per bus that we are striving for under the COVID regulations, but that will essentially free up five drivers for each leg to help fill these absences or cover these absences. The other component to this plan is because we have 12 fewer drivers than we actually budgeted for, what we'd like to do is to start advertising that we have five positions that we would like to fill with guaranteed four hours per day and eligibility for benefits in accordance with the contract. And we're hoping that that will make us more appealing. When we have driver prospects call us now, Cindy Durowitz reports, the first question they ask is how many hours am I going to get, and are there benefits associated with it? So we're hoping that by making those positions, it will help us address the sub shortages, and it will also help us get drivers in our pipeline, because when we come out from COVID, we're going to need closer to those 86, 87 routes that we've had in the past. So by getting these drivers in now, we will be able to better meet those needs post-COVID. So that was the plan for addressing the shortages that we're experiencing now. That's everything from my report.
Can you remind me when the deadline is for parents that want to leave remote learning and come back to the classroom or the reverse?
So Dave sent something out the other day, that deadline is October 30.
Our reminder is going now tomorrow, I believe.
Okay.
Re-explaining the process.
Are you starting to see some shuffling? I was curious. Might be too early now.
Well, we have overall K-12, we have about 30 people that have requested to come back on that spread for all of the grade levels. So it's too early to determine what it's going to look like at any particular grade level.
Does it make sense to wait until that deadline was passed to consolidate and cut out transportation routes?
I don't think that we would be by that deadline, and I don't think we would be hiring drivers that soon anyhow, October 30th.
But we expect that we're going to need those five substitutes. We are really tight right now with covering absences and...
Yeah, I wasn't talking about those, I was talking about the slice and dice.
I don't think that that's going to pally 30 kids. I don't think that would make any difference.
And based on the ridership, you're talking seven, eight kids maybe on each of those routes that will be combined. So it's not large numbers. They're being combined because of the low ridership.
Next on the agenda, our board report. First, I just wanted to say thank you again to everybody for participating in our board retreat, which now, a couple weeks ago, I guess, week out of date. I appreciated the discussion that we had about Dr. James' book, and I'm hopeful that it motivates everybody to keep going with addressing these issues in our district. I know we did have a, there was a meeting today of the reopening task force, and I know Willow, you participated, I don't know if you can, there's anything you want to report out on that committee meeting?
Sure. So we met today and just sort of got an update about how reopening has gone now that we're a month in, which is strange to say out loud. We discussed the new Department of Health guidance that was released at the beginning of this month, which dictates who leaves school, who comes back to school, what has to happen before. And there's some very helpful flow charts that we went over. We talked about sort of the communication struggles between the state and the counties, and between the counties and themselves. But it does sound like we have a really good working relationship with our local Department of Health, which was really nice to hear. We have two positives district-wide at this point that are tracked up in the Department of Health tracker. No real concerns yet about others being out of school in a large number. There's, you know, around the positives, there's always a few people who are quarantined not to school, but it didn't sound like we had a lot of people out from any building at this point. We reinforce the need for kids to stay hydrated despite having to wear a mask, for teachers to remind students that they can take a mask break to take a drink. We checked in about how low-risk sports were doing, which apparently are going very, very well, and everyone's been really compliant with all of the rules and protocols, which was encouraging. There's a discussion about if things stay on this track, what we might look to open next as the next priority to follow low-risk sports, so other extracurricular activities and clubs. We spent a lot of time talking about drop-off and pickup issues, particularly at Eagle and Slingerland Elementary Schools, as both of the schools are but very high-traffic areas. So there's some work continuing with that. And the only other thing, I had a question that I forgot to ask, so I don't know if it's okay if I ask now as part of the reopening. And that is the way that we have seen the governor's yellow, orange, and red zones, mostly downstate and some in Western New York, and the requirements associated with those zones. I'm wondering if the committee or whoever is more appropriate can start thinking about how we might build testing capacity and protocols, assuming that some of the red, yellow, and orange start to move upstate at some point, which is likely inevitable at some point. So just to proactively sort of think about how we might address that.
Yeah, I know that Brew County, I think, is part of that, are yellow and are waiting for some guidance on that, which would be helpful to see what they get. It sounds like, from what I've read so far, that the schools are relying on the local health department or some other agency to do the testing. The guidance from the governor makes it sound like the schools actually have to do the testing, but from some further stuff I've been reading, it sounds like there should be more of a partnership with someone who's more qualified to do it. I mean, when you look at the CDC guidance on testing, I don't think that we would have the space to do it. And also, the staffing, because there's different components of each testing piece, and I think it's like 15 staff members that need training, and we need to have certain roles. So I don't, I don't see how that would be possible. I mean, certainly, our nurses could not manage that, they're already working, you know, overtime at this point. So we did share it with our school physician, we will continue to have some follow-up discussions, and that would be something the reopening task force would be a part of. I'm hoping to see what comes out of the current yellow zone there, which I think is just, I think it's just the one right now, the rest are red and orange, to see what their guidance is would be helpful. And that was all I had for today.
Thanks, Willow. Another issue that has come up from the community were requests relating to crossing guards, and specifically whether we need additional crossing guards, I think one by Hammigrail and maybe two over in the Slingerlands area. And so Judy, I didn't know if you had any thoughts or any information about how much that would cost and working with the town on that issue?
I think we will need to have conversations with the town to explore that. The, there was reference to a change in general municipal law that would allow schools to contribute towards the cost of those crossing guards. And interestingly, it grandfathers the existing crossing guards that we have that remain the responsibility of the town, but any new position. So if we were to hire or to ask for these three additional crossing guards, we would have to have discussions with the town as to what would our share of those costs be. The town did note that they have difficulties filling those positions, just based on the hours of work that are required. And even if they fill the positions, they have difficulty with regular attendance, just is what they've experienced. Based on the numbers that they quoted for what they pay their crossing guards, if we were to put three crossing guards in, and if we were to cover 100% of that cost, it would probably be closer to somewhere between $26,000 to $30,000 a year additional in the budget. So not insignificant, but just so you have order of magnitude on what would be involved with that.
And they would still be employees of the town, is that how it works?
Yes, they're considered traffic enforcement, so by law, they're required to be employed by the town. So the town would hire them and then simply assign them to the designated locations.
I think one of the other concerns that was in that email was that if they're absent, they have to have a police officer fill in. Is that correct, what I read?
Yes.
So obviously, that, I think is probably a concern that it takes away from some of what the police are already doing. And if you add three more positions, can the police department manage that? I mean, that'd be a conversation with the town, I'd very for further.
And those are considered special details under the current agreement that we have with the town for the school resource officers and special details. So they fill us separately whenever there's an absence of a crossing guard that requires a police officer to help with that. So a lot of different pieces to this that we can certainly explore, but I think it'll take a little bit of time to...
Sure. I do think it would be worth talking to the town about and just sort of figuring out what it would look like and if it is a safety issue, we want to be aware of that.
Right. So we'll start those conversations and report back.
I would say that I would like to try to have those conversations quickly, just because, first of all, this is, this is the time when most of the kids are walking, when it's, when it's nice out, but then if we do get into a snow situation, I am concerned about snowbanks and having more people out there with eyes on kids if there's going to be snowbanks. So I would like to try to get this going if we can before bad weather hits.
I think the logistics of it, from a financial standpoint, are relatively easy to address. It really becomes more of a can they find candidates who are willing to do that work? Did we have crossing guards previously in those areas, or this would be completely new?
These are new.
What areas are they again? Elsmere?
No.
That they're looking for, two at Slingerlands and one at Hammigrail.
Yeah, where at Hammigrail?
That's where I was wondering. Alden and McGuffey, there's a crosswalk down at the far end of the line.
It's right before you go into the parking lot. And it gets very crowded in that area with kids coming from the neighborhood and crossing the street and cars going.
Is there, there's currently no crossing guards at Hammigrail?
No.
Correct. And there's probably more walkers there. Are there more walkers at Hammigrail?
They've always had a lot of walkers.
Just because they may...
But if you combine all, all the normal walkers plus extra, plus these cars, that's where I'm really concerned. I think, you know, the kids could cross the street fine, but it's actually directing the cars, interacting with the kids.
That's right. And where were the, do we not have any at Flareland previously? No.
And that would be crossing Penwood?
Penwood and Grove, and Cherry and Orchard were noted on the report.
Thank you. Let's see. Another issue that has come up that I know everyone is aware of, and there are some comments that were submitted that I'll, I will read later, is the question about Megyn Kelly and the Hall of Fame. I just wanted to let everybody know that there was, the official document requesting her removal was submitted to the Hall of Fame Committee, and they are going to review that request at their next meeting, which is on December 2nd. And at that time, after they, they will review it and they'll see if, take a look at whether it makes sense to keep her in the Hall of Fame or, or to recommend removal. And then at that point, they will make a recommendation to the superintendent and to the board. So that's sort of where that stands now. And I didn't know if anybody wanted to comment further on it at this time, or...
I think one, just clarification, I think a couple emails referenced that this had been raised a couple of years ago in 2018. And one of them alluded to, or maybe two said, that the Hall of Fame Committee didn't do anything, that nothing has happened since 2018, which, so I'm not sure if people realize that the Hall of Fame Committee did review it back in 2018 and determined not to remove her. So I just wanted to clarify that. I'm not sure if people are, have accurate information on that.
And my understanding is that they took a look at the information then and reviewed it, decided not to remove her, but indicated, if my memory serves, that they would continue if further things came up.
Right. Maybe really have a formal process in place, because it had never come up before, so that's what they developed for them. Yeah.
So Holly, relatedly, last time, sorry, is that John? Just one second. About the anti-racist mission statement that the policy committee, I think, was working on for the district. And I wonder when we think we'll be ready to approve that or review it for inclusion. I think that that is a significant document to have in place for that committee's consideration, since, you know, I'm looking at the criteria again, and, you know, having someone who matches the overall mission of the district is one of the three criteria. So I think that that would be an important piece.
We have a policy committee meeting coming up in, on October 26.
26.
I think that's right. And I've been drafting something, and I was going to bring it to, to the policy committee to discuss at that point, to make sure that we'll sort of, have a conversation at that point about it. And I've had a couple phone conversations with Harriet in the meantime to get her thoughts on that. But I'm hoping that at the meeting following that policy committee meeting, then we can, we can convey where the policy committee kind of came out on that and just go from there.
Ollie, I'd like to comment on that, if I may.
Please do.
I strongly agree with Willow that, that particular policy should be in place, whether we can get it through a first reading before the committee reviews Megyn Kelly or not, I don't know. But I did take the time to listen to the Mark Cuban interview, and I was absolutely floored by, not, I mean, I know she's made other comments, but in that particular interview, she stated, and I'll quote here, "Black Lives Matter is a group founded by Marxists who want to dismember the nuclear family and defund the police." Cuban responded, "That's incorrect," and Kelly said, "No, it's 100% correct." She went on to say that to pretend that Black Lives Matter is not all about defunding the police is to be dishonest. I don't see how someone who holds those views and espouses those to a national audience is in any way someone that we want to uphold. And I think the committee needs to not only listen to that particular interview, but others as well. Because unless you hear it, unless you hear the vitriol with which she presents a lot of, you know, materially false information, I think it's very difficult to make a well-informed decision. So I would encourage the committee to take the time to look at her, basically, not the entire warehouse, but certain interviews that she's done, which have been brought to the board's attention in various emails, where she is someone, I'm, personally, I really am offended that she is on that wall, but I'm not on the committee.
You know, I know there were, I think, more than one official request went to the committee with the form they had created. Is there a way that we can make sure that public comments that have come into the board on this issue is that for their use?
Yeah, yeah. I think that the comments that just came in wasn't getting through, it was happy to have it in place, but I didn't double-check that.
Okay.
Sure. I echo a bunch of what Jonathan and Willow said. I got a bunch of emails, a bunch of things to look at, a bunch of the interview that Jonathan spoke of, some things on Twitter. So from the emails that we got from people in the community, the one that stuck with me was, it was a mom trying to explain her daughter, who was in public, and saying that how, how can that, that her picture be up there, how do I have to walk through the hall each day, you know, seeing that? And I didn't see it, I had to think about it for a while. And I didn't think it was a Democratic issue or a Republican issue, I think it was a basic human issue of, you know, there's a person who's on the Hall of Fame who really questions what I believe is a human being, and who I am as a human being. It wasn't, it wasn't a political thing, it was more of a basis of humanity. And that struck me, it was a very powerful argument to make, how he looks like. And so I get it. Going forward, the part that I worry about is this, is that if and when they, when they review this, and if they remove her, what does that mean going forward for the Hall of Fame? Would we just put a bullseye on everyone else up there? We are in such a hyperartisan world where Democrats and Republicans even sell on, you know, at each other's rights. And what did, what did we create? And did we create a scenario where people are on that wall, and now people are going through their yearbooks from 30 years ago, now trying to find photos so they can, you know, get even? And it's tough, because, you know, I don't, I fully understand why they want to throw it down. So I'm trying to rationalize this and put it together into a reasonable answer. The only thing I can think of is that we look at the Hall of Fame in general, like, is this a thing we still need? It's a, it's a nice thing, I guess, but it is going to cause people in our community harm and frustration and questioning it. And we have, we're spending time here at open board meetings in the middle of a global pandemic discussing it, you know? I feel like the Hall of Fame is a secondary thing. You know, if it's that frustrating people, let's just do the whole thing, maybe we move on. You know, I also, my priority more is the students, so I want to look at the students. But I also want to look at the people on the Hall of Fame, it's like secondary category, look at them and make sure, boy, I just didn't set them up to have their lives, you know, going through what the fight people, make sure that, you know, their names aren't run through the, through the vibe, just because we opened this box and we set the standard for, for Megyn. And then if somebody finds something that matches that standard, then we have to review that person, we have to review the next one.
She ran her own name through the muscle, is, is...
And I, and I get that, in no way, like, I don't even think I'm defending anything that, you know, the email that William wrote about a father to her daughter, there's no response, like, you're right, you are right, I get it. It's just, right now, it is so hard enough, that it is just so nasty that doesn't just come off like, okay, they went after a Republican, so now we need to go after them, you know? And so they're looking at that board like, it doesn't become not a pleasurable thing, but a game of power, like a chess map, where if people are trying to, you know, get back and stuff, I would just want to avoid that. And so I would strongly consider whether we still... And so I would strongly consider whether we still need somebody who's talking to me and saying, you know, like, if you're going to name something after someone, they better name it after Mother Teresa today. You know, it's just so difficult. If everyone has, you know, something in their closet, you know, that it's going to come out and you're really like, oh, we shouldn't have named that. So it's just, it's just a really tough issue. It really is.
I think there's a big difference between having something in your closet and having something that you spew to the net, to a national audience. I also think that there's a big difference between taking to heart what we learned at our board retreat and putting that into action and, you know, ignoring it and walking away from it. I'm choosing not to walk away from it. I, you know, racism, questions of of justice and equity are not things that we as as a board, I think, would ever want to walk away from. Regardless of our political persuasion, which should not have any play in a school board. I I strongly believe that if I heard each of us speaking at the retreat, we all believe in justice and equity and are all, you know, fervently against any kind of racism, that we need to look at this situation for what it is and hope and that the review committee does its job. And if it, and if for some reason, you know, there becomes an issue where it can't be resolved, then I think it's a time where the board really needs to act on behalf of the of the public who we serve.
That would be my point exactly. This is a kind of neat moment in history. There's not anybody else on that wall out there that anybody who's affected to in all these years has been on that wall. This is the person in the public eye. This is an issue that is extremely critical at the moment to these students who have asked us. These are the students who have to walk by that picture every day. We are not, we're not in the building every day. I had to go out and take a look this evening to see who was on that wall. And I didn't know hardly, you know, much about the background of any of these people. So we need to kind of remember that, yes, we do serve of frequent students who are deeply offended by this person in presence for them. We can't, we can't not respond to that.
I understand what you're saying, you know. My morals are telling me the same thing that it's telling you. I get that. I wouldn't, like, not a disagreement. We, that action's taken, then what's that after? Like, we understand what happens after. And that's, that's.
Right. And I guess I would respond that I don't think anything else is going to happen after this. Like, I don't think we need to throw the baby out with the bathwater as far as we did to us having a Hall of Fame. Because this, like I said, this is a new situation. This is the first time this has ever happened. I don't think it needs the doors for, you know, let's remove Gerald Solomon or let's remove so-and-so. I don't think that's going to happen. And also, you know, I've gotten a sick phone call and the recipients, most, they're so grateful. I mean, they're happy to come back to their their high school, be retained. They're, they're very proud of their accomplishment. I mean, it is a nice touch that we do for our alumni and they get targeted. I wish they, you know, 99% of the people on the wall deserve to be on the wall. So, you know, I agree with what you did. You know, see how it goes and what to think to staff within, what our policy, just making sure whoever's on there, we, the mission of the school and, and, you know, what the kids are striving for. And obviously, there are going to be some kids, I'm sure there are some students that maybe don't agree with that because, you know, they have different, different views or whatnot. But, you know, it has to align, like you said, with the mission of the school. If it doesn't, then how would we be able to review that?
Ah, let's see. I lost track of the committee. So there was a facility committee meeting. It's our last.
There was an audit committee meeting. There was.
That will, I know we'll talk about the audit committee. I don't think there, I don't think there was.
There was, there was. I was, I was not there, I think, because it happened on the same night as Open House. And I thought that I should attend Open House. And so if Jonathan or Chris Meyer have anything to add about that, I think it's a lot. It was very out of that call. Projects are going as planned. We were getting a good search of best fuel upfront and some topics associated with the middle school. But other than that, things going as planned. Is it finished or?
Act quick.
Yes.
So.
COVID days.
We should also disclose to the to the board that today Greg asked us to approve certain items, which the three of us did. He asked for permission to go ahead with them because time was of the essence and the three of us did give him that ability.
Thanks, Tom. That's all I, you know, I wanted to share at this time.
Virtual Open House.
Virtual Open House?
I have to say, I enjoyed it.
You enjoyed it?
Yeah. It was fun, from what I heard.
I heard a lot of positive.
Yeah. It was certainly, you know, not as frantic, just rushing around for a few minutes, trying to figure out where you're supposed to be. You had a little wave between everything and then you could zoom in and, you know, put the link and get to the room. And there was only, you know, you know, a few other parents on the screen at the same time. So it wasn't, you know, overwhelming. Sometimes the Open House can be overwhelming with the response of, you know, everybody has a lot of people who enjoy attending on those, on those lines. I, having also been a teacher doing Open Houses, I just thought it was a neat way to, you know, to conduct an event without stressing hundreds and hundreds of parents and hundreds and hundreds of teachers who have to play part. It was very successful.
What, what struck me was you could tell how well teachers have already acclimated to presenting and entertaining virtually and sort of their mastery of using the chat function and the, you know, was impressive, you know.
Judy, was there any damage any of the school buildings or grounds were formed or empty in any time since July?
They all survived.
Who knows? We were just talking about that today. Because there's, you know, one right outside the office in the corridor and I was looking outside and it was going up a little bit. And Frank thought for sure they would have blown it. They all stayed secure and are still standing, so.
Are they being used at the high school and the middle school?
And elementarys. So, yeah, I mean, hopefully the weather stays nice so we can blow them up as long as possible.
I understand how elementary schools are just going outdoor and, but how is that going to go for the high school?
So there's signs.
It seems like they don't have enough time to get out there or.
Well, for example, the one out here, there's some language classes that people ride outside from across the hallway. So some of them are using them. I've seen a lot of the classes completely hang out back. So I think they're just proximity wise, trying to do it as much as possible. And the challenge is you can't really do Zoom or Google Meet classes outside. So you have, you have to kind of plan that. I know some study halls are going out, middle school is lining them up. So certainly, I thought, hey, maybe you can take a chance. But on your home, what do you mean, do you believe it works? I did want to say, I had a parent who coached when I was out, I'll say it, but it does, I was competing in virtual and they were very good at virtual. So just wanted to know that everybody has to wait for them. But that's immoral.
All right, next on our agenda is our presentation this evening on the 2019, 2020 audit report.
Thank you. So I love when we can hear an audit, and I know everybody else does as well. But it's one of those tasks that you have to take so long time to complete, but it's done, you check it off. And thanks to our rescheduled board meeting, tomorrow is the deadline. So the Audit Committee did need to review the report just being Jonathan and Chris Meyer are a new member on the audit.
It's a very exciting.
We have our auditors presenting their findings. And tonight, we will be asked to approve the audit reports and the corrective action plans. And tomorrow is when we have to submit that all through S and P and OSC in order to hit that deadline. We do have Chris Keely from Marvin &amp; Company, who is joining us remotely. I think this is our first ever remote board presentation. This is, believe it or not, the fifth year that we have used Marvin &amp; Company. So what that means is you're required every five years to go through an RFP process. So that will be happening in the spring as we gear up for the next 2020, 21 fiscal year. This is really all about accountability and transparency. So we want to show the community what the resources are that we have taken in and how we have applied them. And I don't know if you caught it, about, oh, a week ago or so, the State Controller's Office released their review as well on the fiscal health of schools. And I just wanted to give it a quick mention tonight because once again, the district received what's called a no designation of fiscal stress rating. It's a 100-point scale. The lower your score, the better it is. You don't have stressors to your overall finances. And our score was 3.3 out of 100. So once again, based on all of the financial indicators that we look at, we are going into this fiscal year in good shape. So at this point, I'm going to pause and turn it over to Chris so that he can give you the overview of the audit. And then when Chris is done, I'm going to give this a quick wrap up on the numbers and what they all mean. And then we'll be done. Chris?
Thanks, Judy. And thanks for your time, everyone. I know this is everybody's favorite presentation of the year, so I will try not to bore you too much. I'm just going to stick to the reports and let Judy go through the highlights of the financial statements themselves. So as part of our audit, we issue a number of different reports. The first report is called the AUC 260 letter. And this is the required communication with those charged with governance. That letter lets you know that we audited the financial statements and that management is responsible for those financial statements, including the the selection and use of appropriate accounting policies, which are described in Note 1 to the financials. And during the 2019, 2020 year, there were no new accounting policies and the application of existing policies was not changed. There were a number of new standards that were slated to go into effect. But once COVID hit, the Government Accounting Standards Board decided to provide some relief and they postponed those standards. So you will see at least one or two next year. But for the 1920 year, there's no changes to any of those policies. The letter also lets you know that all financial statements have estimates. And the most sensitive estimates affecting your financial statements are the depreciable lives of property and equipment, compensated abstances, your other post-employment benefit liability, which is your retiree health insurance, and then the net pension asset or liability, which is your share of the pension asset or liability of the ERS and TRS system. We encountered no difficulties with management while performing the audit. We are required to accumulate all known and likely misstatements that we identified during the audit, other than those that are clearly trivial, and communicate those to management and those charged with governance. And we're happy to report there, there are no such misstatements for this audit year. We had no disagreements with management. Management will provide us with a representation letter, essentially saying that they were truthful, accurate, and honest, gave us access to all the information that we requested. To our knowledge, there was no consultations with other independent accountants. And other audit findings or issues, we really don't have anything to report in this section. And then the final section is the required supplementary information and supplemental schedules. And those paragraphs just let you know that there are some additional schedules in the financial statements that we do limited procedures over and we feel that those schedules are fairly stated in relation to the financial statements as a whole. The next report that we'll issue is actually the audit report on your on your district financial statements. That, that report, again, reiterates management's responsibility for the financial statements, the preparation and fair presentation of those statements, including the internal controls. Our responsibility is to express an opinion on the financial statements based on our audit, which is conducted in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards and government auditing standards. We perform procedures to obtain evidence about the amounts and disclosures in the financial statements based on our judgment and our risk assessment, focusing on areas that we feel are higher risk. We consider internal controls, but we don't express an opinion on the internal controls. And as I mentioned, estimates are an important part of the financial statements, so we evaluate those as well. We are going to be issuing an unmodified opinion on your financial statements, which is the opinion that you're looking for. It's a clean opinion, the highest level of assurance that we can provide. And then the last section of our audit report, again, reiterates that information about the required supplementary information and the supplemental schedules. The next report that we'll be issuing is the Report on Internal Control Over Financial Reporting and Compliance in accordance with Government Auditing Standards. So this report is required for any audit conducted in accordance with government, government auditing standards. This report lets you know that during the course of our audit, we consider the district's internal controls to determine what procedures are most appropriate, but not to express an opinion on the effectiveness of controls. It defines what a deficiency in internal control is and also lets you know that based on our considerations, we did not identify any deficiencies in internal control that we deemed to be material weaknesses. However, there may be material weaknesses that we did not identify. The last section of that report is Compliance and Other Matters. And that section lets you know that there were no instances of non-compliance with laws and regulations that were required to report in accordance with government, government auditing standards. So again, that's another clean report there. The final report on the district financial statements themselves is over your federal awards. And that's the Report on Compliance for Each Major Program and on Internal Control Over Compliance Required by the Uniform Guidance. So the Report on Compliance for Each Major Program lets you know that we have audited compliance with the types of compliance requirements described in the OMB Compliance Supplement that could have a direct and material effect on each of the district's major programs. The major program for the 1920 year was the Special Education Cluster. Management is responsible for the compliance with with the OMB Compliance Supplement, as well as federal statutes, regulations, and the terms and conditions of the grant agreements. We're responsible to express an opinion on the compliance based on our audit, which we conduct in accordance with government auditing standards and in accordance with the Uniform Guidance. And in our opinion, the district complied in all material respects with the requirements that could have a direct and material effect on a major program. So that's a clean opinion on your major program, which, again, was the Special Education Cluster. There's another section in this report, which also talks about internal control. This section talks about internal control over compliance. So similar to the other reports, we consider internal control over compliance. However, we don't provide an opinion on that. Based on our considerations and our procedures, we did identify a deficiency in internal control over compliance that we deemed to be a significant deficiency. And that item related to procurement, suspension, and debarment. And what this really boils down to is that there was no documented review of the vendor's status as required by Uniform Guidance. So any vendor that is paid with federal dollars in a program where procurement, suspension, and debarment are applicable, the district should be reviewing to ensure that those vendors are not suspended or debarr'd. And essentially, there's a website that the district can go out to to verify annually that each vendor charged to those programs is not suspended or debarr'd. And there was no documented review of that. So our recommendation is that, you know, one time per year, the district go out and review that and document to make sure that there are no vendors suspended or debarr'd. There are no question costs as a result of that finding. So that's certainly a good thing. We went out, we checked all of the vendors in the major program, and none of them were suspended or debarr'd. So there's no actual noncompliance as far as question costs go. And then finally, our last set of reports is over the extra classroom activity fund. So we audited that as well. It's important to note that the extra classroom activity fund is in accordance with the cash basis of accounting. We issue, or we will issue, an unmodified opinion on the extra classroom activity fund as well. We did have a number of findings that were discussed with the audit committee. That's not unusual for the extra classroom activity funds. None of those findings are things that we don't see fairly common with most districts. Those findings don't impact our report. Because that report is on the cash basis, the funds are either coming into or out of the extra classroom activity fund. There's no impact to those findings other than that they are reported based on what the New York State Education Department guidance suggests the best practices are. So I know that that was a lot, and I ran through it fairly quickly. Are there any questions on any of our reports? Okay, well, that's really all I have on my end, so I will turn it back over to Judy.
Thank you, Chris. It really was an unusual audit in that we did a lot of it remotely. This year, we were uploading a lot of documents to their portal. And then you can see there were a lot of legal requirements for them to check. It was an extensive process for them. So we appreciate the work that they did on that for our opinions. As part of the reports, we also prepared corrective action plans. So we addressed the finding relative to checking for suspensions and barbings. We're actually going to include that language within our contract so that we have a notification clause to the vendors to tell us if they have to come suspended or debarr'd at any point. But we also will be checking that as part of the annual preapproval of these new measures. So a compliance element that we will have to take care of going forward with that. When they come back and do the audit next year, that's one of the things that they will check to verify that in fact it's been done in accordance with the program rules. So if you go to the next slide, I want to just quickly run through some of these numbers. The theme, of course, is unusual year. I've never seen a year in which we spent almost $1 million less than the prior year. And that is purely driven by the fact that we were in shutdown with in-person construction from the middle of March through the end of the year. So there were quite a number of things that didn't happen while we were in that shutdown mode. So a lot of the savings and a lot of the reductions are in the staffing costs. We made sure that if you didn't have to hire to fill a vacancy, we didn't. We were in trying to conserve our cash flow, if you will. So people transportation, there were large savings there because we were not doing busing of students. And anytime you have savings on your salaries, you have corresponding savings on your fringe benefits, many of which are a percentage of your salaries. The increase in debt service was as expected, that's us for our bond schedules for repayment. And our operating transfers increased, and that was mainly a reflection of the need to help the food service program because I have some slides to show you on those operations, but we were providing meals, and we would have had a sizable loss in that program were it not for the transfer in from the general fund. So to come in, almost $5 million below the adopted budget and $1 million less than last year's operations. As we had talked about in our budget development, we wanted to set those monies aside so that we would have them to help us weather the reduction in state aid that we are expecting to be dealing with this year, along with the increases in our costs because of COVID-related expenditures and personal protective equipment and things like that. Let's go to the next slide. On the fringe benefits, again, pretty unusual to have a reduction in these costs. A large piece of that was also driven by the reduction in our rates with the teachers' retirement system. So that was down almost 1.3 quarters percent. So that coupled with the reduced salaries generated the largest piece of savings there. Our health insurance was flattened to only a 1.1% increase. And part of that was the switching from our regular health insurance plans to negotiated model plans. And that also helped save costs. We were in the low single digits, and then we actually changed dropped to about 1% based on the change in the underlying plan. So overall, down about 2%. Go to the next slide on our revenues. We were almost $900,000 ahead of last year's numbers. We were very close to our budgeted revenues, just under $300,000 of what we had budgeted. Our school taxes was the largest increase. Our levy had increased 2.03%, which resulted in $1.3 million in additional tax revenue. So you're probably saying, why do you have a $2 million increase in your school tax line if your levy only went up 1.3%? The reason, if you recall, we had talked about this last year as well, relates to the state's conversion of the STAR program. STAR benefit is typically combined within our tax levy. A principal levy is funded by homeowners who have STAR benefits on their tax bills. The state is converting that so that people don't have on their tax bills. If they are newly purchasing a home, they have to go directly to the state for that. So essentially, they cut the school out of the middle of that process, and the money is just between the state and the homeowner. So you see the reduction in the STAR and the pilots. We actually had close to a $700,000 reduction in our STAR aid, and that is what is causing that additional increase in the school taxes. It's just the reclassification between the programs. The other revenues were pretty close to on target with the budget. And we did have the reduction in our state aid. If you recall, one of our earlier meetings, I had flagged, there was a $150,000 reduction in our June aid payments. And we were required to adjust that revenue estimate. So you can see we're a little bit lower, and it's because of that, we pulled up the state aid. So our fund balance, we did end up with about a $5.1 million increase in our fund balance. And it was applied to each of the components that we had approved when we did our tax rate setting and reserve resolution back at our August meeting. The one thing that I really wanted to highlight that I was ecstatic when I saw it was the New York State Association of School Boards, jointly with the New York State Association of School Business Officials, had released a report looking at the impact of the COVID pandemic on students and services for students. And they made some recommendations there for what could be done differently to help schools cope with these shortfalls in resources and additional costs. It was the strongest advocacy that I have ever seen from those groups in support of increasing the 4% limitation on the unrestricted and reserved component of our fund balance. We are at, thank you, Ms. Brittany, we're specifically moving that. The $3.8 billion is at 3.68% to just under the 4%. It's the second line from the bottom there. If we could go higher, as all other local governments are able to go higher above that 4%, that becomes a tool that we can use to help deal with unexpected things. No matter what it is, it wouldn't be restricted based on the different subcategories of those reserves. So their recommendation, we hope, will catch the attention of our elected officials at the state and that perhaps maybe this could be the year that we finally get to meet and see that change. I know Ms. Fahy and Mr. Reslin are probably sick of hearing talk about that. And I know Jody talks about it with superintendents and verniscus as well. But that would be a no-cost way for the state to make a large difference in the finances of school districts throughout New York. Their recommendation, presented. Let the board decide what is reasonable. They didn't put a number on there. All other local governments' boards are able to determine what a reasonable fund balance level is. So it's based on the facts and circumstances of the district's financial position. So, you know, as a percentage of our COVID budget, that's the case. So I would love to see that. So lastly, on our school lunch fund. So you can see that these revenues had dropped significantly. If you back out the $300,000 transfer from the general fund to help offset the losses of that fund, it would have been around $1 million or about $500,000 below budget. And that reflects that we just did not have sales for that march through June period. If you, I just want to make a quick mention because I know we had a piece that was announced this week about how the federal government is providing meals to all students through the end of the year. When we look at these numbers next year, you're going to see lower numbers, of course, on our sales, but you're going to see an increase in our state federal aid on items.
When does the federal government send us that money? Like, because they say they are, but are they, have they said to us? Or are we just assuming they're going to?
So the federal monies are a pass-through to New York State. So we submit all of the meal data to the state, and it does come to us relatively timely. And...
Have we started to get over that money yet?
Yeah.
Okay. That's great. Thank you.
So with the charge for services, did it decrease because of COVID on the revenue side? For the school lunch? Yeah. No, 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 not on the school lunch, it was just on the revenue a couple of times ago. On the revenue. Well, the charges for services, I believe, also includes like our facility rentals. So we were closed down. So you didn't have those type of services coming in there either. So everything was in contraction mode because we were on full overload. If you go to the expenditures, we had our staff working here largely through the entire year. They were preparing meals for the needy families. Even though our food product revenue, our expenditures went down, you can see we had budgeted $635,000. We were only at $444,000. But the fact that we were not providing meals to the entire student body through that last few months of the years, or of the year, we were simply providing meals to the shorter list of families that needed assistance. So at just under $1.3 million. If you go to the next slide. With the reduced revenues, which would have been under $1 million based on the closure, we would have had close to a $300,000 loss in the food service program. So we did transfer, the money's in, we can't operate the fund at a loss. We need to make sure we have the resources there. So we transferred the $300,000. So it does bump up that fund balance by about $25,000. And if you recall, we talked about the reason we wanted to have more money in there because there were COVID-related equipment expenditures that the food service director needed to make. And we wanted to make sure that those resources were there to better position us in this current fiscal year. So that, in a nutshell, is a rapid recap of what the numbers, the story that the numbers are telling us based on our operations. And as always, I have to thank my staff because they've been working from about May right on through now in October. And the reason that we have these clean audit reports is because of the work that they have done over these many months. Not only is it a 75-page financial statement, but it's about 120-page SB3 report that goes into the state. So it's a lot of work, and they did a really wonderful job putting it all together.
Judy, where, it might have been Slide 6. I'm wondering where things like PPE and partitions and cleaning products show up? Or maybe they really don't on this report, and we'll see them up next.
Well, they're in there. A lot of those costs would be under the lines for general support. We were putting those costs into the operations and maintenance budget because those are typically, you know, normally they're buying things like paper towel and other paper products. We added in the gloves and the masks to those line items. So that was included in there. And that was just the start of it. Of course, there are more that we'll see in the future numbers.
Are we keeping track of all those expenses separately? Is there ever...
Absolutely.
...funding source for COVID-related expenses?
Well, and there is a potential funding source. You could remember FEMA declared this a disaster. So we worked with FEMA initially. We have our application set to be filed with them. So we had set up separate account holes to track all of those COVID-related expenditures so that we can submit that. And we're also tracking additional staffing costs that we have in place this year to give help with kids who are spread out in more locations and need additional supervision. So yes, that's all being tracked. We'll submit it. We don't know exactly what FEMA will cover, but we'll get the most reimbursement that we're able to get once that is submitted.
Put additional Chromebooks in that category.
There really weren't a lot of additional Chromebooks that were purchased. I mean, we have a separate code, so any of the type of equipment that was purchased is earmarked. So whatever you spent it on will be submitted.
One more question about this year, but do we have any additional information for the state at this point about state aid and additional reductions?
They were supposed to release a report by September 30th, and we haven't seen that yet. So, and I haven't really heard anything further. I mean, there was a rate, it went by about 20%. And, you know, how can we be inferring these costs in terms of the program and not having this money that is due to us coming in? So the 20% reductions that started over the summer are on pause for the moment. But we don't know if they're going to be resuming again. I think a lot of it is dependent on whether there's federal money coming in and also how bad our state's guidance is supposed to be. Don't know yet. I will let you know as soon as we have a sense of that. Jonathan noted that he didn't hear the question. I think the question became apparent in the answer, but the question was, any word regarding state?
Does anybody else have any questions for Judy? Or for Chris? Thank you both very much for your hard work on this. And Judy, you can also convey our thanks to staff as well for their hard work on this project. Thank you. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
All right. Next up on our agenda is our recognition of public comment. And we did receive a number of comments in advance of tonight's meeting. And we did receive a number of comments in advance of tonight's meeting. All of the comments that we received, we will attach to the minutes of the meeting. I will go through most of them. There are a couple that are more lengthy that I'm going to summarize, but they all will be attached for people to review. And a few might be able to have an answer or some comment, so I might ask for your thoughts on them. First, we received a comment from Juan Thompson, who writes, "Question about children having to have their camera on. I believe that at one of your class meetings, it was said that schools cannot mandate cameras be on. However, this is not the case. The middle school announced that cameras are to be on at all times. I am fine with this, if children have the ability to wear their backgrounds, but in clarifying this matter and looking at security issues, I'm anxious."
So, yes, we did provide all teams with guidance, according to Google call Zoom or Google Meet etiquette for this year. One of the recommendations is for cameras to be on at all times unless a family comes to the teacher with some sort of hardship, which is why they can't have them on. Both Google Meet and Zoom do allow, Google Meet allows for background wearing. On Zoom, if you're not on the Chromebook, which our kids are, so you can't change the background, which mostly because of the transition to Google Meet now, you can't order the background. But again, if there's an issue on an individual basis, the poor family should walk directly with the teacher. But having seen classes operate with re-engagement much, much better than it was in the spring, when students have the option of putting cameras off, it's a huge improvement in the education experience perhaps.
Thank you. Next, we received a comment from Caitlin Barnett, who writes, "As the parent of a child with a chronic condition, I am concerned that the Albany DOH COVID testing school attendance policy potentially discriminates against children with chronic conditions by requiring repeat testing each time a product's, product's symptoms present and/or a visit from the child's provider to test to symptoms or not due to COVID. I would like to request that the district give parents the opportunity to submit attestations of chronic conditions from their child's medical provider before they get the medical call from the school asking them to pick up their child and submit COVID testing. The district could email parents inviting them to submit such a form."
I can, sure, we're not permitted to do that yet, follow DOH guidance. But in the most recent guidance, DOH did indicate that with a chronic condition, once they see their physician, the physician can send documentation into us to let us know what the chronic condition is, in that if the child presents with those symptoms after the initial onset, then we could use that guidance. But we can't just have parents do an attestation that the child has a chronic condition. That's not allowed for DOH guidance.
All right, next, we have a comment from Kristi Dinsted, who writes, "Does the district have any idea how long will be doing the hybrid schedule? Is there any plan to get the students back to school full-time? Has the district considered other options? For example, students going full-time but on a day-to-day schedule, going off of classrooms, with students having lunch at home, or the days the students are home, they're on Zoom, watching the teacher live, and can ask questions plus participate in class?" Thank you for your time. So, I mean, at this point, we don't know.
Right, I mean, with the six-foot social distancing, we could not have all kids on stage.
We also have a comment from Robert Kusar, who writes, "Following up on the recent memo from Mr. Hurst, given the heightened sensitivity to sniffles, coughing, et cetera, that will likely require a significant increase in the number of sick days, why can't grade three to six, or perhaps grade three to six, completely observe the classroom so as to avoid falling behind while awaiting doctor visits for COVID test results? I can certainly appreciate that teachers must focus their attention on in-person students, but given technological advances, it is a missed opportunity not to provide, unlike, you may have the opportunity where remote students are muted, or alternatively subsequently distributing a video of these classroom experiences."
So, I mean, we do allow grade six through twelve to livestream classes. It's only K-5, but we don't have the capability. As you can see here, the high school and middle school are outfitted with a large panel. Plus, the teacher has another device which enables them to pull this off. And they do this every day, so it's something that they're accustomed to. Whereas to try to pull this off where, just once in a while, you have to try to set this off and get things up and running for their home, which it's just not feasible, plus with younger students. You really have to dedicate all of your time and attention to the students in front of you. Trying to also manage with their homes simultaneously is a huge challenge. So we work with the teachers, meaning we provide support for parents who are at home and they are out for extended periods of time. It's really known to a friend, then the opportunity of waiting for COVID, right, students who are out for illnesses, will receive work sent home. And then as they return to school, the teachers will be able to sort of catch them off, like a frontiers destruction. But we don't have any plan of livestreaming the play live.
And even just, I was in the virtual learning academy today, and those teachers are just devoted to the kids online, and they're struggling at times just trying to keep those students engaged. So trying to do that here, be in charge of eighteen kids in front of you, does not work.
I read the suggestion, though, to be that someone at home could at least listen and watch, and not necessarily engage the way that the first few days of elementary school were, where we had half the kids at home and half the kids live, and teachers not to give it. And it wasn't perfect, but it was really impressive.
But it would still require, that would still require the teachers to have separate devices, which they don't have. They just, they don't have the setup to do that. So to say, we'll just take the Chromebook and do that, and they don't have that now to use in class as they would want to use it.
What did they use for the first three days of school?
For all the kids, no, that was not an ideal setup. It was only for small portions of the day, it wasn't for the entire day. And it's, because last, it's not a great model of elementary level, that some kids on, some kids off. So we feel it's more appropriate to send them to a home, to give them their back, and try to navigate setting this off.
I, I don't, I don't think any of this is ideal, so I think as the, as the season kicks in and we prepare, there's likely to be a huge uptick in people out of school who now have to stay out for ten, fourteen days at a time. It just put us that we maybe revisit it as we, as we progress.
Our next comment comes from Marietta Angelotti, who writes, "Some of the content used as part of the CSP curriculum, for example, teaching of language arts, but also in social studies and even other classes which have word problems, may unwittingly perpetuate gender and racial biases and stereotypes. Given the authority of teachers and students' lives, this may send a message of approval to students when used in classes without specifically analyzing or commenting on it. As the district set up a policy or procedure for reviewing correct gender and racial bias content as part of its commitment to address racial and gender bias." David, if you want to say a couple?
It's certainly something we're working on. We, our social studies department and the English department just met with prior presidential debate, who they spent time working in the area on how exactly to review your curriculum to look for those sorts of issues. We're still in the very infant stages of this process, but that is something that we're going to look at all of our curriculum, to ensure that it doesn't have the biases that it would have.
We also received an email from Karen Fitzgerald with questions about, and I believe it pertains primarily to the middle school level, why we are not trying to get our students outside during recess periods, and then, in addition, why students are permitted on Chromebooks during recess. And it is a long email, so, but I encouraged her to take a look at it, and I was hoping that we could get this also to my club so that we can review. And then lastly, we had several comments that came in with respect to the Megan Kelly issue. We had a, and I won't read all of them. Again, they'll be attached to the minutes. But Judy Abbott writes, "I am requesting the completion and submission of the alumni Hall of Fame removal form that our district resolved to remove Megan Kelly from our high school's Hall of Fame. I would like to see our board discuss this matter at the October 7th meeting. This request was first initiated in 2018 by community members, with students with this health said that it was okay to wear blackface alongside your character in your hometown when you should grow up. No, blackface was never okay, ever at the time of the 2018 request. There apparently was no formal way to remove an alumni from this place of honor in our high school. Our articulate members of Students for Peace and Survival were brave enough to publicly address Megan Kelly's employer at C S P with an open letter, asking the network to do more to fight institutional racism. Your students in 2018 asked Miss Kelly to show more understanding, love, sensitivity, and honor for journalism. She has failed to even try to do this, and is not someone who shares our values, character, and ethics. No more hate also applies to our Hall of Fame. I have provided the requested supporting evidence and materials along with the form. However, all the board of the district need to do is examine Megan Kelly's Twitter account to understand why this is still an important matter to be taken by the district." And then we also received an email from Judy Lasher, who writes, "I ask you immediately to remove Megan Kelly from the Hall of Fame in the CSP. Her blackface comment made several years ago was enough to get her fired at C S P. Yet she remains in the Hall of Fame in the CSP. Additionally, the Hall of Fame has decided to keep Megan Kelly in the Hall of Fame despite pleas from the student body to remove her in 2018. It sent a loud message to our children of color and to our white children. The children of color and their safety is not as important as to get behind." Although, I have copied and pasted just a few of her beginning racially offensive statements on her Twitter account from 2020, and there's reference to a statement on August 27th regarding Jacob Lang, September 29th, a tweet made during the presidential debate, and September 30th, where Megan Kelly says, "I'm so sick of talking about race, I'd be disgusted to never talk about race ever again. This religious cultish obsession with racial issues and racial identity and grouphood inevitably drives racial discrimination and hostility. It is quite literally making the world worse. How do our Black and Brown children stand a chance to succeed? We're the ones responsible for educating, and refuse to announce this woman in the media or rhetoric." And again, I would just request that the comments that we received be forwarded to the committees, if they can, if they can have those in addition to the forms. And next on the agenda, item six, action items. A, finance action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items, one through four. Any discussion? Acknowledge the donation made by the Department of Soil and Water Conservation. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? That carries? B, professional personnel action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items, one through 14.
Show move.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just had a question. I forgot to look at the updated attachment, would we reflect only clubs and sports that have been approved for in-person?
Virtual, I mean, virtual, yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? That carries? C, support personnel action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items, one through 16.
Show move.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? That carries? D, other action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following action items, one through four.
Show move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? That carries? Item seven, meeting and events. Our next meeting is next week, October 21st, at 7:00 PM, anticipating executive session at 6:00. Monday, October 26th, at 6:00 PM, is the Policy Committee meeting that I mentioned earlier in the meeting. On Wednesday, November 4th, is our regular board meeting called NUTS, or Seven, anticipating the executive session at 6:00. Seeing no need to return to executive session, and I have the motion to adjourn meeting.
Show move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.